Good evening, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees Special Meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Stewart. Trustee Monahan is excused. Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Cassandra Bulmer here from our dispatcher's office. If you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that'd be great. Thank you very much. One item that we will deal with right before approval of the agenda is next week. It's not even next week, yeah, maybe. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is April 11 through 17. And in honor of the wonderful public safety dispatchers that we have here at Plymouth Township, we'd like to present you with this proclamation in honor of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So Cassandra Bulmer, if you could just step forward. I'm not going to read the whole thing, trust me. But this is just an appreciation for all of us, from all of us to all of you, for all the wonderful work that you do as our 911 telecommunicators and dispatchers. Keep up the good work. And you know, a lot of people don't know that our dispatchers also work for the city of Plymouth. And so if you call 911 in the city, your call is actually coming here and being dispatched from Township Hall. So certainly on behalf of the city, we'll thank you as well. Okay, thanks. Okay, item C is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Clerk.
I move the approval for the agenda for Tuesday, April 6, 2021.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Item D is approval of the consent agenda. Comments, questions?
I reviewed the bills.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Clerk.
I move the approval of the consent agenda for the special meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by Treasurer Clinton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is public comment, but this is, if you're here for the sidewalks, we're going to have a public hearing right after this. So if you're here for the sidewalks, we'd prefer that you talk during the public hearing for the sidewalk. So is there anybody here on anything other than sidewalks right now? Okay. Then we're going to move on to item F. Item F1 is the public hearing of necessity for the 2021 sidewalk replacement program, and I will need a motion and a roll call vote.
Mr. Supervisor.
Clerk.
I move for the opening of the public hearing of necessity for the 2021 sidewalk replacement program at 7:03.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And it's still 7:03. So we now open for the public hearing of necessity on the 2021 sidewalk replacement program. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, we would ask that you come to the podium here, speak very closely and clearly into the microphone. We will need your name and we will need your address. And we would appreciate it if you limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. Come on down.
Thank you. Usually people don't have a problem listening to me or hearing me. My name is Paul Lictig. I live at 11072 Chestnut Drive, not too far from here. And I guess my question, I was here when the last sidewalk program came through and I had a couple of my tiles replaced in front of me, in front of my house. And one of them that's about to be replaced again is sticking up quite a bit. And it's because of my tree. I have a large tree out in front, so I understand what trees do. But it doesn't seem to me that it was prepared properly underneath. As far as, my understanding is they're supposed to go in and tear out some roots and do some preparation prior to this. And I walk around my subdivision and I see there's quite a few nice white-looking new pieces that are all trashed now and marked and going to have to be replaced once again just a few years later. So my concern is this wasn't properly prepared last time. So of course, refund would be great. But anyway, I'm sure I'm not getting that. But what I'm asking is, is there anything in place that's going to prevent, or you know, something in place that's going to prevent this from happening for this new process that's going to come around? Or a check and balance?
Sure.
Or something along that line.
So Jeremy Schrott is our township engineer to your left, and he'll probably be answering a lot of questions tonight. So I'd like him to comment on that. I don't know, when was the slab replaced?
Whenever the last, let's see, I've been in the township between eight, nine years. So this would have been, it wasn't right when I mean, I don't remember the date, but I'd say probably within the last five or six years or something like that. What was it? 2017?
I don't think we did a program in that year.
Now, we did not do a sidewalk program in 2017, but I believe that Consumers Energy, Consumers Energy came through that year and did some pipe replacements. Is that?
Yeah, some gas sewer or gas service replacements, so that would have been a.
That wasn't mine. Mine was a letter similar to like what I got here and I paid, you know, I had the price spelled out and it was through the township and everything.
In 2017?
I have not had any, no, I didn't say 17 for me.
Yeah, she did.
I said probably older than that.
Could it have been 2016?
Probably. I'm saying, because I've been here about eight years.
15, 16.
So it's within the last eight years.
Did you say it was, sorry to interrupt, did you say it was 11772?
No, 11072, Chestnut Drive. Yeah, so it was within a couple of years or so of me moving in eight years ago.
Okay, so Jeremy, any comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. You know, we know trees are going to continue to be an issue in the future and that's something that, you know, we, a lot of homeowners continue to work with the county on. Those are owned by the county, so addressing those usually falls on the county. What we're doing in this year's program is we're physically removing the roots six inches below the sidewalk. That will give you some time. It won't pop immediately, but trees grow. So it's going to be an issue moving forward.
I understand. It's just the sheer volume that I saw. I saw many occurrences of this, so it's not just like, oh, my tree's big and poor me.
Is this the slab you're referring to? Turn around. Is this the right?
Yeah, the one on the left, right there.
Oh, you got it.
Blue flag. Which is now a little higher than that.
Hang on, Jeremy's got a better picture.
Oh, something got unplugged.
Yeah, I unplugged it. He's going to pop it in.
Yeah, but that is, that's the worst one right there. I have three of them that's going to be replaced right now. There's that one, there's a little one a little more this way, and then one on the other side of the driveway, farther down. Yeah, oh, yeah. See, you can see it from that angle.
So you can see that it's newer than the surrounding ones?
Right.
Yeah, that's a whitish one. That one with the X is.
That's the one being replaced.
So that damaged piece that's in the foreground, will that be replaced also, Jeremy?
I believe so, yes.
Seems like it should be.
Yeah.
This one in the foreground was not marked to be replaced. But when I was talking, I'm going to have a private person come out tomorrow morning and actually do it, to be honest. But, and they're going to fill that in. So I mean, well, they're going to replace the one with the X and then they're going to fill that in. So presumably, it'll be smooth and filled.
If they're going to fill it in, it won't last. So we need to talk about that.
Yeah, I would say what you could do is just replace this sidewalk flag here, the one not marked, and just raise it up to match that one. You know, if you replace this one flag, that would kill two birds with one stone.
That's a great idea.
So you're saying replace this closer one, not the farther one?
Replace, yeah, replace this one and not that one, exactly.
So cheat, cheat is what it is.
Bring it up and that way you don't have to replace two flags.
Well, he's coming tomorrow morning to start this, so I guess I need to.
You need to be there, or somebody needs to be.
Oh, I will be there. I work from home. That's not a problem.
One suggestion for anybody who has root problems, there's a product called Foaming Root Killer. I've had great success with it. And you put it on along the sidewalk once a year, following the instructions, and it keeps the roots from growing.
Foaming?
Called Foaming Root Killer. You can get it at any of the big box stores or Ace Hardware.
Okay, I'll certainly take.
In a small plastic bottle, follow the directions to the T, and you will not have the problem.
Not have that problem going forward.
Now, are we, Jeremy, are we cutting away some roots if they're in the way?
Yes, so we're planning on right now asking the, in the contract, the contractor is required to remove the roots six inches below the bottom of the sidewalk. So it'll buy us some time until they grow back and eventually push the sidewalk up again.
So one last question. Am I going to have any issue now, like your suggestion of replacing this closer one, not the farther one? But the farther one has the X and everything else. Am I going to get chastised for not, you know? You know what I mean, like?
No, we're handling all those kind of case by case and we got a running database of exactly who has which sidewalks and we just remove them from the list and we can come out there.
Should she call, should he call the number and record this?
Yeah, we're taking notes also.
Okay.
So we'll just mark it up and what we can do is, once you replace this, you do have to come in for a permit mainly.
I've already called in and done that.
Okay.
They said it was just a call-in.
That's fine. They're probably filling it out for you. But what that is, is it gets generated and sent to us and we track them and then we can go out and physically inspect it. As soon as we inspect it, we remove it from the program. So this one, we'll go out with a white can of paint and just paint over the red or the pink X.
Okay. So there's nothing else that I need to do, even though we just made that slight modification?
Yeah, once you replace this and ask us to come out for an inspection, we'll verify it.
Great. So you have two other flags that are going to be replaced tomorrow?
There are two other flags. This is definitely the worst one. I have, let's see.
Another one right here.
Yeah, there's another one, and then there's one on this side of the driveway. Which is barely noticeable, but.
Right here.
I guess, yeah, this one with the X here, right?
Yep, and it's, here's the lip right here.
So those are my three. But I was just concerned, like I said, especially because seeing all the newer ones that had, that are marked.
Now, when private people come out and do this, Jeremy, are they going to cut away roots?
Yeah, that's up to them, so that's.
Maybe instruct them?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I plan on being out there tomorrow morning. There's no problem. I was not out there when this got done years ago, so I have no idea.
Right.
Who did it, but it was the contracted people through the township that did it last time.
Yeah.
This time, I'm making sure someone else is doing it, in my case.
And five years is not kind of an unreasonable amount of time for those roots to grow back. They grow relatively quickly. But yeah, we are taking extra measures and gave them a specific depth to go below the sidewalk to hopefully prolong that time period as much as possible. And we will also have inspectors and quality control out there to make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing.
Of course. Great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next?
Who's next? Anybody?
Yes.
Yep. Oh, this is the hearing. Oh, got it. Never mind. Gotcha.
Hi, Dave McCrum, 41451 Crab Tree. There are four blocks that are marked, and once again, it's because of the tree. I'm going to cut the tree down. The county won't do anything. I've had enough of the tree. It's gone. Now, the four blocks, two of them have been displaced by the tree, the two middle. The two end ones, which for some reason you have to be replaced, have, are just like when the township hired a contractor to put them down. So I'm wondering why are those being replaced? And if they are, why weren't they done right in the first place? I don't think I should have to pay for four. Two, I don't have a problem with, but the two end ones, that was, that was just the way they were made by the contractor that the township hired.
Jeremy, any comments?
Yeah, so the reason there's four slabs instead of two is that there's several different criteria. There's not just a lip on one end or the other. There's also cracking in the slab, tilt to the slab, surface scale, et cetera. You can see up here, these flags are rated number five for tilt also. They're greater than 8.33%, which is more than an ADA for a ramp.
So what's your grading level? What's a one versus a five, is it?
A one, a one would be like ADA compliant, 2%. And then you go upward from there of like a three, a four, et cetera, up to.
So one is good, five is bad?
Yes, yep. Five is kind of exceeds the criteria for, meets or exceeds the criteria from the township ordinance.
Okay, can you clarify the tilt? Are you talking with the sidewalk or with the grass on each side?
The cross slope of the physical sidewalk. So when you're walking, it's level and then it goes to not level. And it's great, that slope is greater than 8.33%, which is greater than even an ADA ramp for longitudinal.
Okay, so those two end ones that we're talking about, they are still flush with older ones that they are butted against to. So how is that any different than when they were put in?
The, I don't, I don't know how they were put in or, you know. Yeah, right, right here. Let me see.
You have straight view?
You can see the tilt here, obviously. This is where the tree roots are popping it up. And then that slope continues on through. You need, in order to correct that slope, you need to take that extra flag out in order to level it out. That's, that's the reason why that's there.
You're talking slope this way, not slope that way?
It's for both. It can be either or. It's basically whatever exceeds that 8.33%.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're talking this slope, this way.
So parallel to the road and perpendicular to the road, both ways? Parallel.
Okay, we, he's got to speak because he's got the floor right now.
The, I mean, that's, that's the way that the contractor that you guys hired, that's the slope he built that with. That's, that's not the tree messing with it. It's only those two middle ones.
What year was, what year was it put in?
I guess 16, so not that long ago.
It looks newer than the other one.
Okay.
So look at this one right here.
Right.
And the next one looks newer, the one with the X on it.
No, those two are the same age. All four of those are the same age.
Well, I'm saying the one down here is older.
Than the one next to it up?
No, down.
Down, down here.
That's an old slab. Where the dot is.
Yeah, that's the very first one, and there is quite a slab up. To get to that first, you can see there's about an inch ledge there where the pointer is. That slab has been pushed up by the tree, which is over to the left. This slab here, you can see it's flush down here with the old, just the way it was made. So the only tilt is this way, and it was made that way.
So where the crack, where the crack is, can we cheat that? Because we're going to replace that one, the one, that way from the crack. Put your pointer on there.
Right here.
I don't, yeah.
That one and.
Is that going to be replaced?
That, that one would, yeah.
And the next one is up.
Yeah, right now, the plan is to replace all four of them.
Okay, so when you replace those two, does it cheat in the grade such that you can make it work without replacing two more?
The, the problem here is the, is the cross slope as well, trying to tie all those back together. I think we could make it a little bit better by just, you know, replacing this one flag, but you're still going to be beyond the township ordinance requirements.
So there's four in a row that have to be replaced?
Right.
Well, I, you know, I disagree on the.
Yeah.
Back two. I'm not sure about the slope left to right. It doesn't sound right to me because, like I said, where it butts the old, you can see, there's no difference there, left to right. So that means when that first slab was built, that's the slope that they put on it. And I don't feel I should be responsible for something that you hired a contractor to do and now you don't like it, but you want me to pay for it. I don't mind paying for two. There's two that are up. I understand. But those other two, I think that's on, on the township. I really do, if you want them replaced.
Did you pay for those in 2016 also?
Yes.
All right.
So and like I said, I want to cut the tree down. I'm going to cut the tree down.
Well, we'll, we'll take it under advisement, but I would ask that the engineers go back out again and do another look over.
Okay.
It looks like it is sloping to the, to my, to my left, that way.
Yeah, sounds good. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Is there any way they can?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Put a, Jeremy, can they put a forklift under it and pull it up a little bit?
Well, no, because it'll become even steeper at that point if you try to lift up the other one. That's where some of these, where you try to do the, you know, cement underneath it, it doesn't always work if the slope is also an issue. That's why we try to provide as much documentation on all the different defects. Because you can trip on a lot of different things other than just lip.
Okay. Okay, who's next? Okay, if I don't hear anybody, I'm going to close the public hearing. You have to come up here and state your name and address. It's a public hearing. So, anybody else in the back? No? Okay.
You don't, but does he want to speak?
I, he has to, he has to play by the rules. He's got to come up to the podium. He's got to give his name and address and he's got to state his case.
You were, you were here last year. All right, so you know how to speak. Come on up there and tell us what you think. Well, we can't remember from last year. Our brains are raised.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll to close the public hearing.
Trustee Stewart.
Wait, 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 I would like to make a comment on this, if I may, please.
Does it relate to the sidewalk project?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a second on that motion?
I seconded.
Okay. So.
So here's the discussion.
So there's a second, so.
Yep.
So there is, okay. Three letters have gone out in the last 11 months. Significantly different. The second letter, first of all, Paul and all of you, thank you for coming. Paul, I forget your first name, sir. Dave? Dave? Okay. Good biblical names. Paul, David, John.
Matthew and Mark.
My point is this. Open the lines of communication. The heavy hand of local government coming down and saying, we're going to remove these slabs and you're going to pay for them and we're going to put them on your tax bill that Mark Clinton will send out and you don't have any voice, is not the way we want to approach these things.
Thank you very.
I have had, excuse me, excuse me. I have had to replace four slabs in front of my house. I had some more work done last week. And I believe in the purpose of this project. I have had senior citizens use a walker at my humble Lake Point home. I have seen my two and a half-year-old grandson slip and fall on my neighbor's sidewalk because there was a more than two-inch gap and I worried that he was going to lose a tooth already. So there is goodness in wanting to do and the quality of life and the quality of our property values. But the method in which we ask you for money can be improved with our communication with Mr. Schrott. And I'm so glad to hear, Paul, once again, I'm using you as an example. You're going to be out there tomorrow morning. Now, I used a contractor named John Cinnacola and I used the man that Jack Parmenter in Lake Point is my nominee for Citizen of the Year for Plymouth Township. He has facilitated at least 35 sidewalk improvements within Lake Point. Because he sought out a private contractor and this guy was good. I kind of believe in the private sector, having been self-employed for over 35 years and having to ask people for money in order to live on straight commission. I've never been salaried, other than six years when I was at the trough as a state representative. So asking you for money and putting it on your tax bill is offensive. Let's start with that. But if it's worth it and for a good cause, then we have to accept this for the common good and for the greater good of everyone here in the township. Mr. Bennett and I, I'm a practicing attorney. We don't want to see the slip and fall lawsuits. We want to see quality of life. I live in a subdivision, probably more than any other subdivision in Plymouth Township. There are walkers. There are senior citizens rolling the walkers. Now, I haven't heard anybody say in this sidewalk discussion that our sidewalks should be ADA compliant. And they ought to be. I haven't heard anybody say, we want to do a quality job, but we don't want to get charged above fair market value. We want to be dealt with reasonably. And as Jack Parmenter said to me, there's been fair notice now that three different letters have gone to residents in the last 10 months. Significantly different letters. And now, we have the Homeowners Association here from Lake Point, represented by Beth Birmingham, saying, we really haven't heard in recent months, in the last month, we haven't heard a lot of complaints. But a year ago, there were a lot of people who were very angry, very upset at the heavy hand of local government saying, this is what you're going to do. And you have no input. You have no voice. You have no representation as to what's going to have with your personal property, your real property. So we've come full circle and we want to do something really good that is ADA compliant and conducive to walkers, bicyclers. I'm a rollerblader at 70 years old. So that's what we would like to do. So you won't need to look at your watch anymore, Mr. Supervisor. We need to do things right from the beginning. And this was one issue as far as communication. It was fumbled. The ball was fumbled on the goal line.
Okay.
So let's go onward and forward.
Call the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes.
Yes, we're closing the public hearing.
We already closed it?
Yeah.
That's what this is for?
We're taking a vote to close.
Close, yes.
Vote to close it.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have item F2. This is the Sidewalk Replacement Program Contract Award. Jeremy, you just want to walk us through this one more time?
Sure, this is the contract award for the Sidewalk Replacement Program. But as you may recall, we also bid out two other sidewalk gaps at the exact same time for McLumpa and for North Territorial. This is to include those as well as the location at Beckin and Arbor Trail. The contractor has agreed to hold his pricing from 2020 throughout this year.
Okay. And we also have the revised resolution with us tonight, which was requested by Finance because there will be a budget adjustment as part of this, as part of this contract. Any other questions? And we also have, just for your edification, everybody, we do have a letter here from the mayor of Plymouth indicating, rest assured that the city recognizes the importance of connectivity between our two communities, which was reflected in our 2018 Joint Recreation Master Plan and is committed to filling the sidewalk gap, I'm paraphrasing now, in our city so residents can travel the sidewalk unimpeded to Sheldon Road. So that is the gap that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, which is roughly in front of the city's New England Village subdivision, which is about 700 feet from, from our township border to Sheldon Road on the north side of North Territorial. This is, this is about as good as I can get of a commitment, you know, because he can't, I can't bind the township board any more than he can bind the city commission, so. But the, the good news is, unlike a township, a city does have state road money that they can use on sidewalks. And I would even go so far as to say that their downtown development authority could probably pay for this sidewalk gap because it's our folks who want to go into their downtown to spend money and improve their tax base. But we'll let that, leave that decision up to them. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions from the board?
Two. I got two, please. Um, first is that, uh, do you recall what the price per square foot is with this particular contractor? I, I want to say it was like $13, but maybe that was high.
And then there's a price per flag. I'd like to know that, too.
Yeah.
Flag, for the, for the flag they're replacing.
There's several different sidewalk sizes. There's four-inch and six-inch. So, for the North Territorial piece, they're giving us $4.50 per square foot for the four-inch and $5.70 for the six-inch.
Oh.
And then there's ADA ramps that are seven.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't know why my memory was different. So, so that's a pretty good price, $4.50. Does that, uh, for a new pour, or is that a replacement as well?
No, that's for a new pour, and the reason why that's a better price than the, the pin and pulls is that there's several setups with it where this is a long continuous run of sidewalk.
Oh.
And you can even see here from the two bids, JB versus Great Lakes. I mean, it's $54,000 between the two, so it's one and a half times just to the next highest contractor.
So, the one-off replacement is, um, that's where my memory was, $13 a foot or something like that?
Yes.
Is that what you meant by flags, Chuck?
Yeah, a flag, one of those sections that we were showing there.
Yeah.
What's it cost? What's the people going to be billed for that?
Uh, I think it was $265 for a four-inch, I think was the...
$265 for four.
Yeah, I think that was the final number. What was that?
What, what's the dimension of the slab?
Uh, five by five, 25 square feet.
So, over 10 bucks a foot?
Right.
Wow.
And we actually got a, we've been following up with Canton on their program, and they have a program that's probably twice the size of ours, so a lot more economy of scale. And they're at 245, so, I mean, we're real comparable to that.
Why is there, because it is one long continuous pour, that's why it's so cheap, so much cheaper?
Yeah, it's, it's much cheaper to line up several trucks and pour them all in one spot rather than have to mobilize in, you know, in, in our case, 500 spots.
We, we also got this quote last year. So, that was arguably the peak of COVID as well, and they were, they were desperate for business.
I believe the last time we did this, they were $200 per slab. So, that's, given today's environment, that's not as significant.
Yeah.
So, it seems like a competitive price.
200 to 260, you don't think it's significant?
I believe the, the slabs, when we did this program five years ago...
2016 was the last time we did it?
We did it in 2016, because I remember, I remember Jerry and I knocking on doors on Tavistock in that area down there, and, and there were, we were dodging them back then, the slabs.
Bob, could you, while we're talking, could you bring up? Jeremy, here's what I'd, I'd like to understand. Those other two gap projects that we're doing, Beck Road and Ann Arbor Trail, and then McLumpa?
Can I ask my second question?
As we're bringing up pictures of that, could you describe exactly what's gonna be done at those sites?
I know Bob had another question, so let's, let's get to that. Well, we'll be cool. Let's go.
Hold on one second. I, I just wanted to ask about, some email went around about, uh, the option of grinding instead of replacing. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh, you're talking like grinding the lip off instead of...
Yeah, so you don't have the trip hazard, but you don't have to go for full replacement of the slab.
Right, yeah, there's kind of several issues with that. Number one, you're kind of opening up the pores on the aggregate when you do that, so you're lessening the life of the concrete. And then number two is that's not ADA compliant. If you're talking like a one-inch lip, you're gonna grind it over maybe like a six or six-inch, you know, area.
So, some, but some communities do that? They do that grinding?
Some, some communities do it as a temporary fix with the intent to come back and replace it. Like, I know we've, you know, the township has done that in the past with the intent of coming back and fixing it in the near future.
So, I've seen also, when I've been walking in neighborhoods, I've seen where people took like a patch, and that's, they're not supposed to do that either.
No.
No, we, we did have one of those this year, and we told them that's not...
Residents are not supposed to do that. We will do it, however, where we have had a trip, a known trip injury. I mean, and that is only meant to, very temporary, to stop the, uh, stop it from happening again.
And that's, that's asphalt cold patch is what we've been using in the past on those, just to get us through to when we can actually replace it.
Just as a temporary, okay. What, what did you want to see, Mark?
Could you bring up a map of the corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Beck? Like, maybe do a satellite view. I'm, I'm trying to understand, Jeremy, why this would cost $25,000.
You're talking about the ADA thing?
Yeah.
Near the golf course, west of the golf course?
Yeah, right there.
Right there.
You want to see the satellite?
Yes.
So, there's a decent amount of replacement on the northeast corner. Uh, the southeast corner, we have to extend the sidewalk and end up replacing quite a bit on that end. Um, and then the northwest corner also needs a pretty significant replacement and regrading with a new detectable warning, et cetera. So, we took that pricing directly from JB's contract and just applied the unit prices to the quantities we have in the design.
So, the sidewalk's in bad shape?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's our sidewalk?
Yes.
That sidewalk is, doesn't look like it's in bad shape.
Doesn't look like it's in bad shape at all.
From a grading perspective, we had to remove a decent amount to get it ADA compliant.
So, it's ADA compliant grade?
Yes, exactly.
So, you have to take it out, and then on the, the church side there, which is the southeast corner, there's no, you have to extend the sidewalk.
Yes, we have to extend sidewalk that doesn't exist out there, exactly. So, we gotta cut it out, put a base in, grade it.
Do we have to put the little dots at the, for, for the blind as well?
Yeah, the detectable warnings. Yep, we'll have a detectable warning on all three corners.
So, where are you gonna extend that sidewalk to, or from and to?
Uh, I, I can provide you the plan, but I want to say it's like 15 feet or so to the east along Ann Arbor Trail in order to line it up perpendicular. We're trying to keep the crossing distance as minimal as possible while still providing the stop bar at a reasonable location for the vehicular traffic.
So, I'm... That's a strange intersection. I go through that intersection every day. It's a strange intersection because it's on an angle. And my concern, if you put a sidewalk there, the cars go right up to that streetlight. And you're gonna have people crossing the street and cars not used to people crossing that street. This is my concern. But you answered my question about the cost, because I didn't realize that we had to completely regrade that thing. Every time, this is a question, every time we touch a slab, do we have to consider the ADA compliance?
Any, yes, you should. Anytime you're replacing sidewalk, you need to build it to the ADA standards. Uh, and I, I would say to your other point about, you know, drivers not knowing that there's pedestrians crossing, we have advanced warning signage that's gonna go in there, as well as signs directly at the crosswalk pointing down with a pedestrian crossing sign.
Okay.
When you say at 15 feet, uh, you said it's moving 15 feet east?
Yeah, it's, we're trying not to go on a diagonal across the road. We're trying to keep the crossing distance to a minimum. Um, less time the pedestrians in the roadway, less chance for, uh, negative interaction.
Now, we're not putting a crosswalk or anything there, right?
No, we are. No, the plan is to put a painted crosswalk in there. That's why the advanced warning signing is going in to, um,
Okay.
Tell you that...
But this is, is this one of these crosswalks where, like you see in Ann Arbor, where you have to stop?
Well, it's...
Or is it concurrent with the light?
It's concurrent with the light, yeah. So, it's, it's basically the, the six-inch crosswalk will be in front of the stop bar. So, the car has to stop at that. It's not one of those ones where you push it and the button automatically. It's not like a hawk signal or something like that.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to the ones, really what this is, what this is gonna be more like is like McLumpa and Ann Arbor Road or, or Main Street and Ann Arbor Road, where you have a designated crossing area, which you don't have right now.
Right.
But I'm, what you're, what I'm thinking of is what you see, again, you see it mostly in Ann Arbor. Uh, sometimes East, East Lansing, where you've got crosswalks, where you've got intense flashing lights and you can press buttons, and, and if you don't stop, you're gonna get a ticket. I mean, you should stop, but they really mean it.
Yeah, they've got a specific ordinance that requires the drivers to stop when there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk or in the, on the ADA ramp. That's not gonna be the case here. This is still gonna be handled just like a traditional traffic signal.
So, like McLumpa and Ann Arbor Road?
Yeah. Yep.
So, it'll be the hashing, the white hash marks will be there?
Right.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No, Kirk, just some comments. Um, here's my suggestion. This would be my preference, is this sidewalk gap program is a big deal. I mean, if, if we look at the township overall, and we look at all the gaps, and we look at the potential amount of money that we're gonna spend over time, it's significant. It's, it's going to be a lot of money. This alone, with these three fixes, is $175,000. And as I think through this, and I've thought through it a lot, I'm thinking, "What are we getting for $175,000 today?" And the answer is not much. Um, you know, here, we're gonna fix the slope. The one on McLumpa, it's really just a sidewalk in front of somebody's house, and then it stops. It doesn't connect to anything. And then the one on North Territorial eventually will connect, if Plymouth holds true to their word to connect theirs, um, will eventually connect into the, connect into the, um, city. My suggestion or my preference would be that we separate these two things, that we have the sidewalk program, and then we have the gap program. And I would like to look at the gap program holistically. Look at everything that needs to be done in the township in terms of gaps. And then I would like to come up with a scoring system that says this is a one, two, three, four, or five. A five being, if we do this, we fill in a gap. Where, and, and to be honest, if I looked at these right now, I would say this one at Beck and Ann Arbor Trail is a one. I'd say McLumpa's a one. I would say North Territorial's probably a three. My point is, I wouldn't spend $175,000 today on this. I think there's higher priority projects that we could be putting that money towards, and maybe down the road, three or four years, we start to fill in these. So, my suggestion or my recommendation, we, we back up a little bit, we look at it more holistically, we rate these things, and then we start attacking the fives first, followed by the fours, et cetera. That's my opinion.
Mr. Supervisor, that's a good plan for the, the gap program going forward, uh, uh, Mr. Treasurer. I do agree with that. In this particular instance, we, the, the previous board talked about this location right here in Ann Arbor Trail. Uh, this is something that, that was near and dear to the heart of, of Trustee Dempsey, and so we kind of committed to that. And, and secondly, and probably more importantly, is that in this particular instance, we're getting a good price based on last year's, um, work. And so, I, I think going forward, I would agree with you. But in this particular instance, I would, I would wrap this into that, uh, a program that we're doing that is gonna be paid for by the public, not by, not by us.
No, we're paying $175,000.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is the total, the total project, though, is going to be co-shared. But, and, and I think that, I think that, that you make a very valid point. We should rate them and score them. But in this instance, we had made promises to do this work, and I think we should just go, go ahead and go forward.
Jeremy, did we, did the contractor agree to hold the price contingent on us giving them $175,000 more worth of work?
They, they held the price contingent on us giving them the sidewalk gap work. The only thing that wasn't originally included in that would have been probably Beck and Ann Arbor Trail, but the other two were.
What is the McLumpa to Ann Arbor Trail? What, is it, does it run on McLumpa?
It's on McLumpa, yeah. It's just south of Ann Arbor Trail. It's actually a section that we, uh, you know, with Chuck, we're able to secure, uh, easement through that property.
Right here?
Yep.
And that would also include a, would that include a crosswalk as well?
No, we're gonna, we're planning on building it up to the crosswalk, and that's one we were talking about potentially looking at, you know...
Gap filling later on.
Yeah, exactly.
Because you have a gap on the north side of the road there
Right.
in the park. It's on our property. You'd have to do a lot of engineering because of the creek.
Yeah, and, uh, it's a mid-block crossing with no stoppage, so we'd have to have some sort of RRFBE or something along those lines. There's a lot of funding programs, though, that we could look into that would help with that.
So, it goes to nowhere, though. It just comes up to the corner and stops?
Comes to the corner, and then you cross.
But there's not a, this isn't a legitimate crossing?
There's no place to cross, too.
But if you want to go to the park, you have to cross the road.
Yeah, but you, you're crossing at a non-sanctioned cross?
But where else would you cross? There is none. So, isn't it better to get partway there, and then you cross? Right now, people are just running across that person's driveway and jaywalking into the intersection.
And sometimes showing intent, you know, helps.
Is that your, is that your...
No, I don't own that property.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, let's have any more comments from the board?
All right, well, the ranking system has been done over the years, and that's how we ended up with many of the sidewalk gaps filled. Uh, and eventually, building, development comes. We build it, and they will come. That's what happens when it comes to sidewalks. It's the two largest requests on the recreation survey and the most recent master plan survey. It was walkability. And it improves safety. My judgment is that there is probably no better way to spend money that gives value to people's health and safety and get to our parks and get to the city of Plymouth. People say they're moving to Plymouth Township because they want to be able to walk to downtown Plymouth.
I'm, I'm not opposed to the sidewalk gap program. I think it's gonna be extremely difficult to implement because we've got lots of areas along Ann Arbor Road, along Ann Arbor Trail that are just gonna be difficult to put sidewalks in for historical...
You're right, and that's why we pick one side. For example, on Ann Arbor Trail here, there is one piece of property where a person won't give an easement. But when that property changes hands and becomes developed, you'll have a completed sidewalk on the south side to at least Glenview. And then you, you can cross to the north at Glenview and get to the park.
Hey, Bob, just turn your, your stylist around there. I thought that was humorous. Go to your left. My left, yeah, that's good. Keep going. I just think it's humorous that here we've got the, the poor jogger who is, you know, halfway in the street and halfway on the grass, just trying...
This is a dangerous area.
Just, just doing her best, you know?
Yeah, it's...
That's why we, and this is what our people want. In, in, in the recreation program, in the recreation master plan that we did with the city, in the, in the master plan that we're working on right now, the number-one recreational amenity that people want is connectivity, is to be able to walk, jog, and bike safely throughout the township, with the priorities being the main, uh, the main roads into the city of Plymouth. Um, and we've been talking about this now for four years, really. I mean, this is the first time we've actually put money down to, to start doing something about this. You gotta start somewhere.
Well, don't, don't get me wrong, though. I'm, I'm for the program. I, I think, you know, I, I understand it, it ranked high. But if we only had $175,000 to spend, would we spend them on these projects? My answer is no.
Really?
These are a low priority.
I would, I mean, and I, I don't think anybody disagrees with either, with that statement, Kirk, but I, I would be concerned with this sidewalk coming up to McLumpa to Ann Arbor Trail. We're sort of encouraging people to run across this road.
They do anyway.
They're doing it now.
That's like Frogger there.
They're doing it now.
I mean, it's just, right now, they're, they're, they've, they've cut a natural footpath, you know, for what, maybe, you know, 50 feet, 100 feet, I don't know, on McLumpa?
The way we've handled that in the past is just to provide a sign that says sidewalk ends, you know, if you're worried about people crossing or liability.
Well, eventually, if we get a grant, or, remember, CARES gave us money last year. The stimulus is giving us money this year. In front of our own property is where we need to think about putting a, fixing that gap. So, you'd have to transition from McLumpa to the north side of Ann Arbor Trail, which is our park property, which currently does not have a sidewalk.
Okay.
But you've got to start somewhere, and ranking has been done. There was a map that was done a long time ago with a bunch of gaps on it, color-coded.
Yeah, we've got it.
You've got it?
We've ranked them. We, you've, you, I've given you guys emails over the last month about...
So, there is a ranking. It's been done.
Jeremy's done it.
Yes. And a lot of it's in GIS, too.
It's in our GIS system now.
So, we need to look at it again. But these came about as convenience, price. We can get them done now. I recommend, moving forward, we've been talking about it for five years now.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Anybody in the public? Gentlemen in the back, come on up.
If you'd get close to the mic. If you'd get close to the mic.
And you can take the mask off, okay.
Yeah, I just have a question. I didn't know quite where to begin when this all started here, but you were talking about these sidewalks out around the community. Who owns those sidewalks?
Well, it depends on the road jurisdiction and also whether it's county, state, privately owned or township-owned. So today, we've been talking about sidewalks that are, in this case, in front of you here, township-owned sidewalks, but also we have individuals pursuant to township ordinance, the sidewalks in front of your home are your responsibility, okay?
That's my question.
Even though, even though, when somebody slips and falls and hurts themselves, they could sue you, but they sue us because we've got the deep pockets, and we pay whether we like it or not. And you know what that means? You end up paying in the end because when you sue your local government, ultimately, we just pass that cost along to you.
I think, though, if I'm understanding the point of your question is that if the township installs a sidewalk on private property, from that point forward, the homeowner is responsible for maintenance of those slabs.
Well, I was getting to that. I said, who owns those sidewalks?
Yeah.
And you're contemplating putting out money to repair or do something with those sidewalks. Now, who owns the sidewalks in front of my house?
What's your address?
As far as I knew, that my property stopped at the beginning of the sidewalk, and then there is a sidewalk. I didn't know that I owned that.
What's your address?
If I own that, then it would be my right to put up a block at the beginning of and at the end of. People would not be allowed to walk on that sidewalk. Is that true?
No.
Why not?
Because there's a sidewalk ordinance in Plymouth Township.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
Your deed probably has an easement for that sidewalk, for the public to pass your property. They can't set up a loan.
They have to pay.
Where do you live?
I should be able to charge them.
Do you know where he lives?
What's your address, sir?
My address is 14524 Farmborough.
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 Oh, you're in Lake Point.
Lake Point, yes, sir. I've been there since 1962.
Brand new.
Pardon me?
Your original owner?
Brand new.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, so your sidewalk, no, your property, your sidewalk is, you're responsible for it. It's up on the screen right now.
Well, why am I responsible for it if it's not mine?
Because it's a township ordinance, and the township provides the sidewalk replacement program so that you don't have to replace your sidewalk and that you enjoy the benefit of the reduced rates that the township gets through bulk purchasing.
You do own this, but you go look at your deed, and it probably has an easement, a public easement.
Okay, so if I own the sidewalk?
You're responsible for the sidewalk.
You're responsible for the sidewalk, it's owned by the county.
It is?
The sidewalk is owned by the county.
It's an easement.
You're in a, you're in a public easement.
I have to put the bill for repairing it, and everybody gets to walk on my sidewalk, and I have to provide that for them, right?
It's the price you pay for living in a civilized society, and that sidewalk brings value to your home because people want sidewalks.
Not necessarily. There are a lot of developments that don't have sidewalks.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
They have big houses.
We're mandating sidewalks now for all new development.
And that would have been in the deed when you bought the home.
Well.
So I understand exactly what you're saying. You've got some good points, but the convention is sidewalks are a positive thing, and you end up having to pay to maintain them as the property owner.
And I have to go out and clean up the dogs and all that sort of stuff. Maybe I should be reimbursed for that, don't you think?
No, I don't think you'll get reimbursed.
Except paying out the money, especially if you're going to build all those other sidewalks out there and fix all those.
Okay.
Fix which ones?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
McLumpa.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? Very good. I'm going to entertain a motion if I hear no other recommendations.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Kermy?
So is this new one now?
Yeah, yes. The lengthy one.
All right. I move to approve Resolution 2021-4-6-25 authorizing the replacement of the non-compliant sidewalk flags and the treasurer to assess the property owners for the work completed for the 2021 sidewalk replacement program, as well as approve the construction award for the sidewalk gap projects listed. Further, I move.
To authorize.
Move to authorize the finance director to appropriate $75,100 of the general fund balance to the Roads/Traffic Department, account number 101-446-970.000, capital outlay account for sidewalk gap projects.
Motion's been made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
No.
Treasurer, Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is item F3. I would appreciate your approval tonight of Mr. Kenneth McDonald as Plymouth Township's new building director. Ken will replace Mark Lewis, our current building director, who announced his retirement date effective June 4th of 2021. Ken would start on June 7th at initial salary rate of $85,000 per year. He will also serve a one-month probationary period during which time he may revert back to the union position that he currently holds of building inspector. I've attached his resume. I believe he was able to answer some questions earlier today regarding that. He is obviously here tonight to answer any more questions that you have, and I've also sent some communications to the board over the last several weeks regarding my intentions on this particular hire. Frankly, the sooner that we can get Ken officially on board, the more that he can work with Mark Lewis to assist in transition activities. And then also, we will have to advertise for a full-time union position of building inspector, and I would really like Ken and Mark to collaborate on that so that we can get a person of equal quality and character and caliber, as we have enjoyed with Ken McDonald since the year 2015. Ken began as a part-time employee, part-time building inspector, and then in 2017, we elevated him to full-time, full-time building inspector. And we really do need, you may, if the question comes up, we really do need another full-time building inspector. We are very busy right now. Plymouth Township is booming. We've got a lot of residential development. We've got very diverse and complex commercial development and businesses that are underway. We may have some even more exciting things happening in the future, so this will require somebody, again, of Ken's caliber in the future. Are there any questions for me at this point?
So how did you arrive at the salary, and will he be eligible for a pay increase this year, or we can wait till next year?
Well, we haven't made any decisions on pay increases for any of the appointees as of now. There is precedent for individuals who have been hired midterm or mid-year, such as the finance director, the DPW foreman is another example of an individual who was hired mid-year and they did not receive a pay raise during that calendar year. How I arrived at the number was that Mark Lewis is currently making $96,000, and so, sorry, but I'm not going to start you at that level, but I think it's about an $18,000 increase over what you're making right now, 18 to 20. Yeah, you're at 68 right now, so he's, you know, it's a nice jump for him, but, you know, he's going to be a department head, and that's a big deal, and he's got significant responsibilities. But I think it's a very fair, competitive wage that will, that gives us a lot of room to, a lot of room to maneuver.
So he will be taking over the vehicle that Mark Lewis currently uses, or we don't need to have that vehicle going home?
Well, we didn't talk about that. That's something we'll have to discuss. Mark Lewis lives in Canton, Ken lives in Plymouth City, and I know that's been a source of controversy over the last couple of years because of the taxable nature of, or non-taxable nature of a, of a vehicle that is provided by the township for both official and private use. You know, we've been, we've been struggling with that through, with finance and with our auditors, but.
Well, personal use, you have to pay, you have to pay.
Yeah, and it's always, and it's.
Exactly, imputed income.
And it's always, it's always a taxable issue that both the individual and the township struggle with, but we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to resolve that later. We didn't think of that one.
Well, you have to pay tax. I mean, you can't resolve that.
Well, I mean, in terms of him getting.
That's an IRS regulation.
In terms of him getting a township vehicle.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's the important thing. I mean, I know that it's, we do have township vehicles available for other individuals who are needed on an immediate basis. I don't know what the history was, frankly, between, with Mark Lewis, when he was hired. He was hired by former supervisor Steve Mann, I believe, and you were here. So, you know, I don't know what kind of deal they made at that point or whether there was some level of urgency that they needed a building director, you know, on call, such as you would have for a member of the public safety or water. So.
All right, so that's still an open issue on whether the vehicle will.
Yeah.
Generally, the portion of the imputed income is the commute to work.
Correct.
That's, that's why when people get all confused and say, no, you know, I don't, I'm not supposed to pay that, it's well documented. So, but his commute is very small.
He's going to ride his bike, but we got to, we need sidewalks, so.
All right.
No, no. Well, we're working on that, too. Okay, anybody else? John?
Real quick, please. More than qualified, thank you for the resume. I appreciate Trustee Dor Shavitz's approach to sending us a private email saying, we want to make sure you're fully committed to being a full-time supervisor here. And I, one personal, you're a carpenter. You work with your hands. I admire that. Okay? You ready to give it full-time here in the great township of Plymouth?
I'm 56 years, I'm 57 in my life.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's more than you.
I was born and raised in Wyandotte. I see you did work downriver.
I did it.
Good. Where'd you go to high school?
Loma del Rey.
Oh, did you? Thank you. Welcome aboard. And I, the other thing is, I, we have no HR director, we have no personal director. I, we got one supervisor who I think is very competent, and he's on the job 24/7. So it's his recommendation that we approve this NOW.
Okay, you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to concur with the recommendation of the supervisor to hire building inspector Kenneth McDonald as a new building director at initial salary of $85,000 per year and all benefits available to this position.
All right, motion's been made by Trustee Dor Shavitz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations.
So the building.
You don't have to get dressed up anymore.
Right. So grounds at Plymouth Township Hall repairs will be his responsibility to manage?
Yeah, yeah, just like Mark Lewis was. It's a very unusual arrangement that we have here, but not only is the building director the building director, but he's also sort of the maintenance groundskeeping supervisor as well. So, but Ken can handle that. You know your way around the roof, right, in the HVAC system, so.
Well, there's two items that hopefully will carry on what he's been doing, is replacing the lights on the overhang of this building. I think he wants to convert them to LED or something. And then the bollards out there are, the lights don't work. Some of them do and some of them don't.
And they're rusting out pretty badly. Yeah, they're awfully water. Okay, item G is public comment. Everybody's all set? All right, board comments. So I've got, we are not going to meet here, we're not going to meet at all until April 27th. And the reason for that is because starting next week, the long-awaited sound system will be installed, and we will, they need a couple of weeks.
Yes.
To do that. So that's the reason why we're not, we will not be meeting on April 13th, and we'll meet again on April 27th. So on April 27th right now, and obviously, it's pretty tentative, is we'll finally have our presentation by the assessing office, the assessing 101, along with an update on what happened at our most recent board of review. We have an industrial facilities tax exemption request from a company called Eotech, which is already in the township. They're in the building that's almost directly across from the, our DPW yard. And so the interesting thing about this is that it's a, it's a tax abatement request for an existing building, but their argument is that what's going on inside, which is a holographic laboratory and production facilities for high-grade weaponry, which is, which relies on holographic targeting requirements, mostly for the military or for police, this is, what's going on inside the building is what they're going to make their pitch on. So, you know.
You're making an investment, right?
They're making, they've bought the building for like $3 million, and they, I believe the number was like $9 million that they've put, that they are putting into the building right now.
Okay, so they're coming, because that building had a tax abatement when it was built.
I don't know that, for sure.
High probability.
Well, it's in the IFT district. It's in the existing IFT district, yeah. So they originally wanted to, they originally wanted to come before us with a tax abatement based on obsolescence, obsolescence of the existing building that was built in the late 1980s. The challenge with that is, if you, if we create, we would have to create a special district for, basically, an obsolescence district. And the fear with that is that if we do it for these guys, for a building built in the 80s, we've got a lot of other buildings in the township that are a lot older than that, and we don't want to create a bad precedent.
Well, these buildings are not depreciating, so they can't make a very good case on obsolescence.
Well, that's a possibility. So we have, we've had a lot of discussions with them, and we've steered them towards traditional IFT. That doesn't mean they're going to get it. It doesn't mean they're even going to show up. They may, they may just say, forget it, but just be advised that that may, that may be coming up on April 27th. Also at that meeting, Mark will talk about this idea for lease and sale of golf carts, okay? And we might have some other stuff, but again, it's, we might have a zoning issue, but it's still too early to tell at this point. So that's all I've got. Any questions for me on anything?
Yes.
Yes.
At that meeting, shouldn't we be doing the dogs in the township park changes to the rules?
We're meeting with, I'm meeting with the park staff on Thursday here at Township Hall because I want to get their opinion on whether or not this is manageable. So far, it's not trending very well.
Well, I noticed that, yeah. The residents want this, so it's not going to, I hope it's not going to be trumped by employees that say that it's too much work.
Well, that's not so much their argument. The argument is, obviously, is enforcement, safety, and the spray scape because whether we like it or not, people will have their dogs in the spray scape this summer. So, all things that we got to think about. But I want to get that, I want to get that to the board, but I do want to, I want to have a good discussion with our staff out there. Okay, Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just as a note, we had a couple of retirements this past week. Nancy Jowsey, who worked at the fire department and worked for the township for 35 years, has retired, and we want to thank her and her family for all of her service of those years. And also Alice, our recording secretary, who worked here for 20 years, has retired. Now, she worked for 30 or 35 years for Garden City before she came here. Now, she worked for thirty or thirty-five years for Garden City before she came here, and so we wanna thank both of those people and their families for, for all their work and dedication to the, uh, to the township, and we have Denisa, who's gonna be taking over the role of recording secretary, uh, as an additional, uh, work, including her, uh, election specialist job.
Will you please, will you please be kind enough to give us notice of their retirement parties, and I don't care if it's tea and crumpets at three o'clock on Friday afternoon?
We had a nice little lunch and, uh, paid for by the chief and myself, uh, for the employees, and to recognize them with some awards, so.
I would appreciate receiving notice of any retirement.
You betcha.
I don't care for crumpets.
Bob, okay, John? Bob's done. You're, you're up.
Well, I guess I've got two heavy things to talk about, um, and in my mind, they're both positive. Um, this township and the taxpayers spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a Dominion voting machine, and from September, from August to November, we doubled, more than doubled the number of voters. We cut in half the time to report. In other words, the primary results were not reported till about six in the morning. By midnight, our competent clerk, who's not an attorney, has a legal education, but our competent clerk had the results reported pursuant to Dominion. Two audits have been conducted. I have spoken with three lawyers who are Claire Locke and Meyer, who are the premier leading defamation attorneys in the United States.
What kind of attorneys?
Excuse me, I said Claire Locke and Meyer. They are defamation attorneys, and they find credibility in Dominion. They find accuracy in Dominion. I frankly find the domestic terrorists who went to our Capitol, both Lansing and Washington, D.C., to be disgusting because the results are done. The results appear to be accurate, and we have had a double audit here in Plymouth Township, and I'm going to welcome those attorneys and the Dominion people to come in here, and our books are open in the clerk's office, but we're getting a little tired of the false accusations, and we're fighting back with the disgusting challenges to truth that our voting stands as what was reported on Tuesday night, November third, on a slightly less controversial matter. As a dedicated Presbyterian and knowing that Princeton Seminary only allows sermons to be twelve to fifteen minutes, I wish our supervisor had given us a sermon. He wrote an incredibly substantive, fantastic opening letter in Plymouth Today magazine. I don't like to be read to, as you know, but I think this was just the best. I commend it to every resident of Plymouth Township. It's called Onward and Forward With These Corporations Along Hagerty Road, which are world-class, and its economic development at the highest level of excellence, and I commend our supervisor. I have approached the executive director of the Michigan Townships Association to ask him to be a keynote speaker at a convention in the future on economic development, our supervisor, Mr. Kurt Heisey. So, um, I, I, A Regional Bright Spot is the title of that article, and, uh, he's tired of me bragging about him.
I was gonna talk about sidewalks, actually, but, okay.
Balance.
Where is the convention?
It's virtual this year, I think.
Oh, you're talking about the MTA?
MTA, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, in April?
Yes.
Okay, in next week or whatever.
Yeah, so you have anything for us?
Can we get a, uh, wow, he's saying something.
Is that coming up? Is, it's coming up soon?
Like next week.
Hundred fifty-nine dollars, virtual?
Can we get enrolled if we want to do that?
You're all members, so-
Yeah.
Call, uh, call Sue.
Okay.
I mean, or you can just do it, you should be able to just do it online on your own.
Okay.
Sue Rams has sent us several emails. We, we don't lack for emails from our supervisor or Sue Rams.
Well, you should be getting it also directly from MTA. They should be sending you the magazine plus educational notices.
I, I just, I lost track of the date.
I think it's April fifteenth, something like that?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, uh, pretty, it's pretty deep.
So it's informative. Uh, when can we get some type of financial report or data on Thirty-Fifth District Court?
We have a court meeting next Tuesday, um, and actually, I, I found out that I believe I'm probably now the chair of the Thirty-Fifth District Court Authority, because Bob Nix was the former chair, and I was the vice chair, and we, we haven't met in person now for a year, so, um, um, that is certainly something that we're all looking forward to. I know they're undergoing, I believe they're undergoing their audit now as well, so, uh, we'll, we'll try to get some financial numbers for you. They've been very few and far between. I mean, when, pre-COVID, we were getting financial updates every month. I don't, have you gotten anything, Mark? No.
That's incredible. They stopped because of COVID?
Uh, yeah, the courts are really different. We don't, we don't, we're not getting a whole lot of information. I mean, I know that, I know Kevin's starting, your, your, your role there is, is starting to ramp back up, but it's all still virtual, right, Kevin?
Mostly.
Yeah.
But they're still spending money, and the employees are still getting paid and working.
Oh, yeah.